We can use all those who can. Okay, here's communications. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Are you open to anybody else?
Yes.
Where are the different programs?
Absolutely. I just, as I've been doing all night, jumped ahead of myself.
Okay, well, it doesn't say others. It's known that I met and Chris were listening.
Actually, if I can address that. This agenda, everyone who's been following politics in Louisiana should recognize there's a whole lot more information coming out on agendas about what's going on than there have been in the past. That is not an effort to trap me in a situation where I can't talk about other things because if I left off these details, I'd be allowed to, right? It is an effort to help communicate with the general public about the kinds of topics and things that we see coming, so if you're interested, you can show up. So the fact that I've put folks I know are going to be here on here is in no way intended to limit it.
Well, I wanted to be sure because when I came in, there was no other place there. And I've been a resident of this city for 28 years, and I know that at the council meeting, it was always being open to the visitors.
And they're always...
They only have a limit.
They're always...
They have to identify themselves, and they're limited in time. So I'm not going to take the five minutes that had to accommodate it in fact. So this is what I want to say. An important part of Louisiana Community Development is the Neighborhood Watch Program, which includes, among other items, the National Night Out, first Tuesday of August every year. And the police department, along with the current chief and members of his department, have been involved for many years. So Paulie, Allison, and I, as co-chairmen of the Louisiana Community Development, wish to encourage more extensive participation this year. We've had neighborhood gatherings over the years. One of them has gone on for more than a dozen years, and I'm not really sure how long, but I asked him, but the first one, Randy and Lisa Tredway, corner of Aitkins, North Carolina. There've been another group at the donut shop, and there've been others that have been held in our community, and the police department would know where they are. The date for this year is August the 5th. And groups organizing neighborhood parties are being asked to register their locations with the police department. And when the day comes, emergency service personnel, including police, fire, ambulance crews, representatives from the library, and public officials will have addresses to make arrangements in the court room. So I talked to Chief Hughes, and I asked if this was something that he wanted me to say, and he said, yes, more publicity did better. And so there will be more publicity, and in the end, it's going to be more focused toward getting registrations for these events around the city of Louisiana. So that's what I have to say.
And you may have no concern. Anyone else?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with the council, and please excuse my sunglasses, there's prescription, but I also have a problem with my eyes, so I have to wear them. I'm here tonight to represent many taxpayer citizens who are also concerned residents regarding several safety issues that the council and the mayor are taking a look at Please keep in mind, these are serious concerns that probably people have, and they're also suggestions, okay? The first one that I might bring up has to do with centralizing 9/11 calls. Now, I know there's ongoing discussion between the mayor and possibly the sheriff, I think, in regards to this. This issue has been visited many, many, many times by very senior stations here in Louisiana. The general conception of at least the majority of the citizens I have talked to, in fact, it was all of them, they don't want to see this changed, in regards to 911 calls being filtered in another area such as Golden Green, as opposed to it being done here in Louisiana. They would prefer seeing it kept here in Louisiana for 9/11 Louisiana calls, and having our local policemen continue to service those 9/11 calls in our community because they know the addresses, they know our community, as opposed to us being put on some centralized list somewhere like in Golden Green and be part of a group of 9/11 calls that would be addressed by deputies. Now, I realize there's many things that are being discussed around this, but I just wanted to suggest that before the council makes any change, in the event they decide to do that, that what you do do is review what was proposed previously, what previous councils have said about that, what their reasons were for not going with it, and also, before you make a decision to change if you do, you let Chief Hughes himself explain to you along with Chief Leslie, the fire and police department...
Robyn, can I?
...be affected. If you let me just finish it, then I'd be glad to do what you have to say. This is just one of a few things. That you let them present to the whole council whatever their pros and cons are, so the whole council will have an opportunity to ask your own questions, as opposed to just a committee, fire, police committee, having that chance to do it.
That's already been done. I mean, that's already been requested, it's in the works.
Oh, it's been requested. Okay, when was that requested?
When was it?
Last committee.
Last committee, yeah.
The committee meeting this month?
Was it...
Do you have a second?
I don't remember exactly which one, but the request was that the...
Okay, was what?
The both chiefs prepare a joint recommendation of pros and cons about...
Right, 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 I understand that, but my point was not to give that to a committee, to give it to a committee to report to, like they have previously, but to give it to the full council in a council...
I believe my request was to give that report to the full council.
Well, then, great, then that takes care of that, that's wonderful, appreciate that. The other issue that seems to be creating some concern has to go to the pros and cons that possibly might come up around certain fireman's pay. There is the feeling that this might be kind of unnecessary in that we have a police, we have, excuse me, we have a fireman who is, works for the city as well as for the fire department, and he's always had a certain contractual agreement with the city in regards to how he gets paid. That's always worked in the past, it's always been to the city satisfaction as well as to the fireman's satisfaction. He is on call 24/7. He is a very important part of our fire department because he drives our vehicle that has our, what is it? Chief Leslie, what does Kelly drive?
Oh, oh, he's our chief engineer.
Chief engineer. So consequently, our suggestion is as well, that if this comes up in front of the council as far as what he is paid being changed at all, that there be open discussion about it, and that Chief Leslie be allowed to report to the full council and answer any questions you might have in regards to that. There has an issue been raised by one councilman in regards to that, and I think it's important that you look at that very closely before any changes are made. Now, the reasons for this is that this city's number one priority, and I'm sure most of you will agree with me, is public safety. Public safety is your number one responsibility, and of course, that goes straight to our fire and our police department. As an example, if our fire, if our police department...
Robin, I need you to start closing up your remarks.
Slide one.
Please.
If our police department comes in front of the council and says they need a new police car, what I think is appropriate to do is to ask the chief of police and let him report on exactly why that is needed, not a representative of the council to report it, because he can answer questions that might be enough to...
Again, Robin, this has been done. I'm in conversations with Chief Leslie.
You are, I'm saying in front of the full council.
I haven't, we haven't done, made any action. I will bring that back to full council when I have the proper information. I'm waiting on a number that was incorrect the first time I got it, so that I can bring it back to discuss in full council.
Okay, I understand, that's wonderful. That's not what I'm talking about, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What I'm talking about is the chief himself presenting the reasons why it's necessary, because he can give a much fuller accounting of why a police car is necessary, as opposed to somebody that can't answer any questions in regards to that particular issue. All I'm saying is giving people an opportunity, everyone on the council and the people who are asking for it, to be able to present that information, that's all. And I thank you for your time, and I also thank you for the things you have been doing that have been needed for so long in the city, and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else?
Hi.
Did you want to speak? No, I thought you were getting up to speak.
I thought you was due.
I was just getting up. Oh, my God.
First of all, I'll say two things. First, I just want to tell you all since you're here, because you always hear the bad smell of that. I made a report to Chief Hughes the other day, I personally have a concern in this town. I took it to him two days ago, he turned his response to it and taking care of it. I just want you all to hear that personally. Second, the main reason why I'm here is I called Bart Eider, our mayor, and we would like to have the city garden moved on our property, just to square it up, I mean, basically, because we have a creek that defines city and county. It would move it, what, 20 yards, something like that? It would have, the fence line would give the city boundary versus the creek that's spanked through there. I know there is some concerns, the people are minority conscious in that, we have no issues with wanting to put, rather than that jump back there. I invite anyone and everyone here to come out and look at our property for River Life Ministries on the, what's it, north side of Georgia Street, come out and see the park that was made back there, come back and see the ponds we have for fishing. It's recreation for our kids, is what it is. My biggest concern, as Chief Leslie could attest to, half is county, half is city, when it burns out there, he gets called all the time, he has to come out and verify we're doing the right thing, which takes up his time. He goes home, has never had any problems. So I'm just asking, making a request to have that property line that's behind, or the fence line, excuse me, just behind Peacock Drive there, read the city line versus the creek, is what we're asking for.
This is actually an agenda item 111C, we can go ahead and handle it.
But sir, do I have any questions?
Uh, my name is Lou Ship.
Sir?
We'll go ahead and handle it potentially now, and I'm interested in the council's pleasure. I started out having a strong opinion that I would like to move the property line to correspond with that subdivision line, it's nice and clean and clear and the fence, and it makes a lot of sense. You know, it's right on the property line, not in the middle of someone's property, or a third of their property, so it would make a lot of sense if I, my organize things that way. The concern, though, that has made me, not concern between those, that should we give up that section of ground, there's no longer a buffer or deterrent, not that ministry, the ministry would do this, but whatever happens in the future with this property, there's no longer a deterrent for, you know, then it's completely unzoned area, you know, trailer park, anything could happen there, and that some of the property owners that are on the other side of the fence have voiced some concern about that potential. So, so there's kind of, you know, I see the rationale for, and I understand the concern against, and I'm interested in the council's guidance.
We talked with residents that live there and asked for input. I don't know how many residents would be involved, but not that many, you know, 12, 15 bones.
True, and I guess my concern is that property can change owners. Creek is going to stay where it is far any major petition.
Yeah.
So, yes, but...
But yes, you're right.
On the 9C, do you have a no here for Board of Adjustment? Are you going to reinstate the Board of Adjustment? And would they get involved in that, doing that work, they would?
The Board of Adjustment is, is already reinstated, reconstituted, actually, it was never made void, but it has membership now. It might be the head of Board of Appeals, which I am also going to appoint tonight. And this, the question of whether or not they would be, that's where my mind went to, was that they might be the ones that could go and ask or conduct a report like this. They do it through variance requests, so it's kind of up their alley.
Question I don't have, sorry, city attorney, changing the boundaries of city limits, you know, a lot of times when that happens, that's usually done by annexation, it takes a vote of the people. I don't know if we can arbitrarily change the city limits without going through the court process, or going through the county process.
They actually already own that property up to the fence line. So that is their property as it is now.
Except, we're not talking about property ownership.
The apples and oranges, because whether or not a particular property lies within or without the city, it's a different issue from who owns, you know, any property in that vicinity. So it doesn't come under the zoning regime, things like that. And I'd have to look at the statutes again, I know the mechanism is statutory, it's not really by ordinance, and, you know, expanding or contracting the boundaries, and that's a question I, would this enlarge the boundaries of the city or contract it?
It would contract.
It would contract it, and there is a process, I've looked that up myself.
And that's...
There is a huge process that has to...
Kind of unusual, usually you hear about cities getting bigger, not shrinking.
Yeah.
So it may be a situation either for the council approval or some loopholes we have to...
There's a whole process that has to be done, yes.
Well, the council's now aware of that issue, I'm not going to take any administrative action unless you're correct me to do so, but you're aware of an interest and a request, and if you would like the administration to do something, I would be happy to...
Would it be appropriate at this time to ask the city attorney to at least give us a summary of what steps are needed?
Certainly.
If we were to do it?
Yeah, I'll be happy to do that. Sounds like Ms. Smith also. Beaten too, she...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just, that was brought up to me, and so I didn't hear it.
Okay. So why don't we do that first, and then if necessary, we'll look at residential input unless we have that first information. Okay? Thank you. Okay, any others?
I was wondering if I could speak to Lucy's request, because I have some things I would like to say. My name is Sharon Shepherd, I'm a deaconess in River of Life Ministries Church, and I just want to assure, so you can assure the neighbors if you go and speak with them, it is not our intention to deface their property, we're trying to work so we can benefit this community. If their concern is a trailer park, we own quite a bit of property in the county, what is owned in the city is really very little, very, very little. We have, I think, a couple places for campers to be put, and we do community gardens there to feed people in our church and then outside our church. So actually, most of the property is in that county, and we have several ponds on the county, and I'll just say, we have been approached in the past where to have someone come in and lease this property, where they'd be willing to take out the pond if we were in agreement, and to put in different types of things such as the Moma Hole Park or whatever, because of being the county, they'd be allowed to do so. We have no intention to allow that. As a matter of fact, we're hoping in the future to be able to work with the city council and get permission to have what we call a movie in, like campground, where we show a movie and we invite the community in for a leisurely, quiet night. So if that's, if that becomes an issue, we're not going to deface that property because we'll have to stop doing the things that we're doing, such as producing food, and any of you are more than welcome to come out and look, we have gardens, yes?
Yes. Could I? Yeah. Thanks.
How is River of Life benefited by taking part of the ground out of the city?
Well, it's where the confusion comes in at, because where it's divided, because our creeks have, well, the creek on our part of the property has shifted, so we're not sure exactly if something happens, who do we call? Do we call Mike Leslie and the city fire department to get permission to burn, or do we call the police department if we have issue, or, you know, that's, that's the question, if we have...
Any other advantages or advantages?
Not really, I mean, it's not going to, there's no advantage to the city, there's no advantage to us, too, it's just so that we know specifically, because actually, right now, we don't know exactly where the property line is. Because a couple years ago, someone came out, I think the city had it done, and they told us where the property line was. But since that time, there's been work on the property, and just the water and the overflow from our ponds has shifted, and we've shifted this way, so we're not sure exactly where it, where it lies.
Basically, if this was done, I mean, look at me, I was here, the, right now, the city says that that creek defines the city limits. If we wanted to, we could easily take a backhoe in there on our property and cut it right alongside the fence and shift the water there and say, hey, the creek moved, you know? What we're trying to do is just get this to be...
A defined...
A straight defined line, because we're talking a matter of...
Because that's what's happening, it is being shifted by nature, we have nothing to it. The water, because we have three ponds, we have one up close by the highway, and when that water comes down into this pond, it's, I mean, it's pretty good, it's probably not two foot deep, and it's, but it's shifting, so we're not actually sure, yes.
Would you hire a surveyor, wouldn't they tell you that?
Well, when they came out, that's what we've been told, that's where the creek is.
Couldn't they check it out and tell you where your line is, in the creek or on the side of the creek, or...
Well, when the city had it, because I believe the city had it come out a couple years ago, because we were in question as to what, which buildings of our buildings were there, which buildings weren't. So I guess we could have a survey come out, a surveyor come out.
You're saying the property line has been shifted by the ponds and overflow that you guys built?
No, I didn't build no pond.
The church did. I think we need to wrap this up. Thank you, and if I'm understanding the council's interest, I will, we'll have the city attorney find out what the actual process is, we'll build this up again at a later date to see if we want to pursue it. Any more...
I just want to tell us the ref, it's 7:1.015.
7:1.015. Okay, any others?
Mayor, you know, I see that the exception can be made over the five minute rule, and I have something that goes to the creek that Mike, he could play, maybe plug into what you're talking about with this property, it'll only take me two minutes to share.
Okay, we have a very long agenda, Robin.
I understand that, but this could go to the property that you're...
Okay, please quickly.
Okay, thank you. What I have with me right here is a Press Journal article. It's dated, there's two articles on the front page, September 5th, 2012. Anybody can get a copy of this from the Press Journal if they're interested. Two of the headlines are, the first headline is "Town branch sewer spills sends cord to hospital." The second article is "City gets okay for town branch work." This is in 2012, okay? Now, the reason I'm mentioning this is that there were seven places, the Corps of Engineers came back and said, you can go in there, you can repair, you can not repair dredge, you can dredge out this creek, and it might help alleviate some of the problems that citizens have, because again, that goes to public safety, people flooding, people's basements flooding, whatever. This was, authorization was given after the council had gone through...
We're aware of it, I'm not sure where this is...
For how long? You're not sure, excuse me?
How does this relate to River of Life, or what conversation?
Uh, the branch, the, the...
The River of Life has nothing to do with...
Oh, I'm sorry, they don't have anything to do with the, this flood?
No.
No. Okay, all right, well, then this is just a PS, that's what I said earlier. Thank you very much, 2012, since then, nothing has been done, thank you.
Because, well, in prior meetings, we had talked about the Love and Son desire to have the property out of the industrial park. So I feel, you know, I invited Mr. Love to come this evening to answer any questions that the council may have about that, because I feel like we all have more information before we can make any decision on it.
So this is maybe a good time to have a larger conversation, too, or note that it is my intention for this administration and council to have as much conversation and business as they can publicly, that I want to use closed sessions as a last resort. I think that almost everything we should do should be in public light. And it was put on the agenda to adjourn to a closed session to discuss real estate. The reason that it is on the agenda is there is a perception that our ability to negotiate or to have clear information in the public light is perhaps being overrun, we're not getting clear information out, we haven't made a trade with them, et cetera. So I just want to be clear that there's a certain threshold, and we do have an adjourned closed session tonight, but just because of real estate does not mean it has to be discussed in closed session. It can be discussed in closed session. If it is going to protect our ability to negotiate and do right with the, our fiscal responsibility to tax holders, then we should be protecting that by having those conversations in closed session. If it's about public policy, about how we're going to utilize the industrial park, then that's something we should be talking about in public. So as we proceed, and I'm very glad to hear and have a conversation about this, this real estate transaction, potential real estate transaction, as it pertains to our policy with the industrial park, like if it comes to a point where it's about transportation, we need to save that for a closed session, okay? So I don't know, the conversation that you want to have publicly?
Well, one of the questions that I think that we need to have publicly is what the ground is going to, would be useful.
Well, our plan is right now, I'd like to put my new shop building there and new offices. We're talking about maybe opening an engineering division sometime in the future when my son graduates college. As of right now, that's why I would like to move my main shop out of the flood plain and my offices, and get on that site right there.
And then there was a question that someone raised in a prior meeting about any sort of damage to the road that your equipment might do or might not do.
Well, as of right now, if that's an industrial park, that driveway should be rated for 80,000 pound trucks. I don't even have a truck license that heavy, so. You'll have, if you get everything developed in there, you're going to have tractor trailers running in and out of that driveway, so, you know, you've got to think about a 40-ton load running across there, and I don't have anything that heavy.
And that was just a question somebody raised, so I just wanted...
Yeah, I'm here to answer any concern... Yeah, I'm here to answer any concerns you all might have or questions.
One other question, and just for clarification. There was a question as to what you would do with the old property in where you're at.
I have a plan to keep it for storage. I don't plan on selling it, I can use the buildings for storage. If the water comes up, I'll move the stuff up, let the buildings, let the water in the buildings, go back, clean them up, put the stuff back in.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate, is anybody else who has anything?
Do you have a projected figure now of how many new employees you might put on?
I don't as of this time, I'm waiting for my son to get through college, he's still got a little time left in college, and then hopefully, we're going to try to, we, he and I have been discussing this pretty seriously.
Do you have a plan whether it'd be one person or a staff, maybe?
Well, it would probably be more than one, I don't think you can do it by yourself, so it would have to be more than one.